We'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the Oregon City Commission, and today is Wednesday, November 19th. Good evening. I'm Alice Norris, the mayor.
Damon Mayby, commission president.
Doug Neely, city commissioner.
Daphne West, city commissioner.
Trent Tidwell, city commissioner.
Won't you please stand and join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to lead off our meeting this evening by a-- with a presentation. As you know, the Oregon-- the Oregon schools now have senior projects that students can opt to do to help them toward their graduation requirements, and we have one that involves Oregon City. So I'd like Christine Rumble to come up to the podium, please. You may bring your support group if you wish. You have a project that involves one of our parks.
I do. My name's Christine Rumble, and I am a senior at Oregon City High School, and I wanted to present to you guys my senior project because it's a big part. You have to have one to graduate, and I really wanted one that would influence the community in a positive way, so. I start off by saying, what is the senior project? And I really wanted you guys to understand, like, you have to have one in order to graduate, and your senior project has to be-- has to challenge you in a way, and you have to usually, like, learn something, and you have to have about 20 to 30 hours of work put into your senior project. And it has to relate to your future goals in some sort of way. And I'll give a little example at the bottom. What's my senior project? Well, I plan to build a brick garden across from the Chapeau Park's new snack shack filled with bricks that the community can buy for $40 a brick, and the proceeds are going to go towards the Children's Center of Clackamas County because I really wanted the money to profit children in some sort of way, and I really like that organization. And I have an brick imprinter. All the bricks were donated. My brick imprinter, Barry Lucas, is only charging me $15 to imprint each brick, so there's, like, $25 profit there that are going to go to the Children's Center. And all the labor as well is going to be donated to put the bricks in the spring, and we're going to kind of wrap up the brick garden. There's a sample brick right there. And I chose this project because I have to graduate for one, but--
Well, there's a basic-- basic need.
Yeah. And I really, like I said before, I really wanted to influence the community in a positive way, and I wanted to raise money to donate to a children's organization and close to home in the community. And last summer, like, my family and I walked Chapeau Park all the time, and we worked the snack shack, so I really wanted a park close to home and that people can go there and see their bricks in the ground and really look at them and see their own special spot in there, so. And as I mentioned before, 100 percent of the proceeds go towards the Children's Center of Clackamas County, and I've been in contact with Shawna Luger from the Children's Center, and she's been really supportive throughout this whole process. She's gone with me to the Chamber of Commerce when I spoke there, and she's shown me through the Children's Center, and yeah, she's employed there at the Children's Center. And my future profession, I'm really looking into the School of Nursing at University of Portland, and I'm applying there currently. And nursing really plays a role with the Medical Center there, and I really am interested in that. And I've started selling the bricks by going to the Parks and Rec Department and getting it approved. I've made order forms that I've spent a really long time doing, but my senior project teacher, Ms. Daniels, really helped me with that, taking time out of class because it's an actual class that you take at school. And I got in contact with Pastor Tom Hertz, and I spoke at the Chamber of Commerce, assisted by Shawna from the Children's Center. And I also set up a booth at parent-teacher conferences with a little display of my brick, and I got a lot of support from teachers and parents there. And soon I'm planning to speak at an optimist club meeting and gain their support, and also the skill of marketing. I never thought I would get into that, but doing this project, it's really helped me learn the skill of marketing and speaking skills, so. And there's a couple pictures.
Who's that guy on the left there?
I don't know.
Is she the one guy you got there, huh?
Yeah.
Escorty Judith Scott Archer.
Okay. Want to see that again? There you go. Okay. And that's my best friend and I at the parent-teacher conferences. I thought I put that one in there. Yeah. And then there's at the Parks and Rec Department with Scott, and then there's at the Chamber of Commerce meeting. Yeah. And so overall, I just really like your guys' support in this and really making this happen. I'm really trying to market off my bricks so that I can make the money for the Children's Center, and yeah, so, thank you.
So how much do you want from us?
Oh. Hmm.
Thank you. We assume that you do have order forms, so if anyone who is listening or in the room--
Yep, I gave it to Nancy. So all you guys can pick one up.
Great. I do plan on buying a brick.
Awesome.
And thank you for your presentation and for thinking of a way to enhance the city. That's-- it's a pleasure to know that you're paying attention.
Yeah, great.
Commissioner Mayby.
First, I'd say that your public speaking is excellent. I know a lot of professional speakers who spend a lot of time with ums and uhs and--
Like.
Like. So--
Had to work on that.
Excellent job on that. Secondly, how many bricks are you selling, or is it as many as you sell as is the garden?
Yeah, it's just kind of as many as we sell, and we'll base, like, the brick garden off of how many we sell and stuff, and kind of the, yeah, the shape of it and stuff, once we know how many, like, we sell. Pretty-- we're doing pretty good right now.
So 10,000 or so would be a really great sales.
Yeah.
That's really great.
I'll leave that for the next commission to really start pushing.
Yeah.
Commissioner Tidwell.
I do want-- I just do want to mention the fact to the commission and to the audience that Christine contacted me to kind of help get this ball rolling for her to work, to meet with Scott and some et cetera, to see where they could go with this if there were even a possibility. And, you know, I think it's really important that, you know, we as not only a commission but as a community really extend the branch of leadership and success to our youth. And, you know, people invested in me when I needed them to, and I think we need to make sure that we're taking a look at those exceptional young people that are out there. And I must tell you, my dealings with Christine and her mother have been two special people, and you are as professional and really terrific, talented young lady, and I just wanted the commission to know she was really a pleasure to work with, and I enjoyed helping you if I could on this, so.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for that, so.
Thank you for all your help.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Mr. Patterson.
Oh, here. Come, let me put the squeeze on rotary.
There you go. See, it's been fruitful already. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We really appreciate your presentation and your work on our behalf. Good luck. Next, we move to the citizen comment part. Mr. May-- Commissioner Mayby, do we have any?
I have received no cards for citizen comment.
Other, is there anyone who has forgotten to sign up?
Gee.
All right. We will move on then to look at the-- no. Looking at the agenda, are there any items on the agenda that need to be moved or changed in any way? Seeing none, we will take the agenda in the order in which it appears. First, we have scheduled a public hearing for an amendment to the Oregon City Transportation System Plan. It has been continued from October 15th, and this is a staff request to continue this item to January 21st, which would of course be next year. Is there anyone that has come tonight prepared to give testimony on this plan? If not, may we have a motion for continuance?
Madam Mayor, just as a bit of information, I know all of you where this is an issue that is related to the development at the rivers, and without that development, it's something that, you know, we-- an action we won't have to take, so we're still waiting to see if we can put that program together.
Is this one of these things that we have a date certain that'll be changed to another date certain?
I believe it's like the third date certain already. We've moved it a couple of times. Okay. We need a motion for continuance, please. Commissioner Mayby.
I move that we shift or change the date for the hearing on the amendment of the Oregon City Transportation Plan to January 21st, 2009.
Moved by Commissioner Mayby, seconded by Commissioner Neely. The vote, please. Nancy.
Commissioner Mayby.
Aye.
Commissioner Neely.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Tidwell.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Next, we also have another continuance on amendments that will go with the Oregon City Zoning and Development Codes that are being worked on by the Planning Commission currently. This would be continued from October 1st. Staff is recommending a continuance to February 18th. Is there any comment on this one? May I have a motion for continuance, please?
Shall move.
Second?
Moved by Commissioner Mayby, seconded by Commissioner Tidwell on the motion. Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Mayby.
Aye.
Commissioner Neely.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Tidwell.
Aye.
Mayor Norris.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Moving to general business, and these won't go so quickly, and the first one is ordinance eight dash one zero one eight, which amends Title 10, Chapter 10.04 and 10.08, the abandoned vehicle code and parking standards of the Oregon City Municipal Code of 1991. A little cleanup that we're doing of this old piece of our code. And the staff on this, Nancy Crusher.
Yes, thank you.
And Nancy Bush.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor Norris and Commissioners. Nancy Bush, our code enforcement manager, will be presenting this item.
Good evening, Nancy.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and fellow commissioners. What you have before you this evening is a request to amend our city's code. This is more of a housekeeping amendment to officially recognize the authority of the code enforcement to address parking restrictions while cleaning up and making the ordinance easier to understand. Providing active enforcement particularly related to abandoned and stored vehicles improves neighborhood livability by reducing parking congestion, protects the stormwater system, improves the appearance of the community overall while reducing related crimes, vehicle-related crimes, along with many other benefits. The ordinance amendment has been reviewed and has received the blessing of the city attorney and the municipal court judge. And again, this is primarily a housekeeping matter. Do you have any questions?
And it's housekeeping because this is actually practice.
This is practice.
It's-- so this is conforming the verbiage to the practice that we have had over a number of years.
Yes, that's correct.
Do you have a comment, Mr. Patterson?
Just when the ordinance or leased in the past, why the ordinance, I think, was written the way it was, is code enforcement used to be within the police department, and since we moved it out, I think that's kind of makes it a little easier to understand.
I guess I just have a-- would like to have a response on the budget impact. It says reduces the police department's responses regarding vehicle-related crimes. So it shifts the time that the police off-- that the officers in the police department will do code enforcement essentially. But that was already happening, right?
Actually, not quite. Ultimately, it will reduce over the long term the responses when code enforcement is able to respond to parking restrictions, parking violations, abandoned vehicles as such. There's generally less vandalism, less car theft, less crimes along that nature, so overall, it should reduce that.
So it's a synergy effect.
Rather than the way I described it. Thank you for the explanation.
You're welcome.
And I would add that there's a considerable amount of efficiency for staff time with not having to go back after three hours of sitting, and there are a number of items in here that improve our staff efficiency.
Great. Commissioner Mayby.
I've been waiting to say this. So Nancy, aye, did you get that Nancy Crusher passed the gavel to Nancy Bush?
Very cute. Very cute.
Okay.
It was a--
It's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity.
We harr on the Nancy clam because I can't not remember names.
Makes it easy for you, yes. Commissioner Neely.
Yeah.
Do you have something real?
Do I have something real?
You mean Nancy is real?
I think so. Well, you'll notice, I think, the person designated with the responsibilities here is now the city manager. I assume that-- that doesn't take anybody else out of the loop, it's just that you essentially designate what happens. And because I'm sure that when it says here it'll be the duty of the city manager to store any abandoned vehicle, that you will not be getting that vehicle storing.
You have a big rush.
Where does it say that? That's actually covered, Commissioner Neely, in the definitions of the city manager.
It says or designate me.
Yeah. So he can designate your driveway to be stored.
Yes. Commissioner Tidwell.
Okay. Move first reading of ordinance number zero eight, zero eight dash one zero one eight.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Tidwell, seconded by Commissioner West. Is there comment on this motion? Seeing none? Mr. Sullivan, it's your time.
This is ordinance number oh eight dash ten eighteen, an ordinance amending Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.04, Abandoned Vehicles, and Chapter 10.08, Parking, Standing, and Stopping of the Oregon City Municipal Code of 1991.
Thank you. Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Mayby.
Aye.
Commissioner Neely.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Tidwell.
Aye.
Mayor Norris.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Second item--
More efficient government, that's a good thing.
Always. Thank you for that. Under-- the next item of business is the follow-up to the denial of a conditional use permit that we executed last meeting. This is the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and final order for AP 0804, the Clearwire Appeal. Is there anyone who has additional information on this?
Just to briefly summarize, you held a public hearing on this two weeks ago, and this simply reflects the findings of your deliberations.
Right, thank you. Are there anyone who has questions about those findings? Commissioner Mayby?
I-- I'll make the motion, but I just want to also point out that I'll be voting in favor of this, even though I voted against the general vote because it's about the findings, not about the issue. So if anybody's been tracking this for some strange reason, I'm not changing my vote, it's a different issue.
Just may I interrupt?
I will yield the floor to the mayor.
Yes, thank you. I believe Commissioner Tidwell was not-- could you check? I believe he left.
I believe I believed early.
You didn't vote on that one.
And when I left early, I don't think I voted on this.
And it says-- I don't know if this makes a difference, but it does in the record say it was a four one, and I believe it was a three one. Was that be correct?
It would take me a minute to check if it--
I don't know if it has bearing, but it's in the--
We could go to the last one.
Do I need to abstain from this?
Three oh one, yes.
I do need to?
I would. If you didn't attend the whole hearing--
Okay. But I did read the material before the meeting.
We do need to have a check on it, then.
Because it was in our packet, and I am aware of it.
Unless there's a problem, I would abstain.
Okay.
Let's be certain here. Do you want to go to the next? She has to be present for this anyway.
Well, what's interesting is that this was the second hearing, and the other one was the--
Right. He was here for the Lutz hearing.
Yes, he left the meeting just prior.
That's what I thought. Okay.
So that is-- the record needs to change to reflect that it's three one.
Three one, okay.
So.
Now, Commissioner Mayby.
I move approval of the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and final order in the Clearwire Appeal with the change that the final vote was three one.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Mayby, seconded by Commissioner Neely. On the motion, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Mayby.
Aye.
Commissioner Neely.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Tidwell.
Abstain.
Mayor Norris.
Aye. Motion passes four zero with one abstention. The next item of business is also the follow-up to an appeal that we heard two weeks ago, the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and the final order for AP 0805. This was for the site plan and design review permit of SP 0804. Is there a staff comment? Are there any commission questions about these conclusions? If not, may I have a motion?
Whoops, Nate, boy, you're fast.
You've got to be faster.
I just was-- I was just asking. I don't want to be as fast as you are, man. Anyway, the-- going to this one, Commissioner Mayby indicated a-- I mean, yes, indicated it was a three to one, and he voted against it at that-- at the time it was originally presented to us. Was this a-- was this something that should also note the vote that went into it or not?
It does.
It does.
Oh, does it?
Yes.
Oh, it does, okay.
Right on page--
And is that correct as well?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Very good.
I'm just checking my memory. Okay. Motion, please.
Move approval of the findings of fact for AP 0805, appealed by Kathy Lutz.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Mayby, seconded by Commissioner Tidwell. On the vote, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Mayby.
Aye.
Commissioner Neely.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Tidwell.
Aye.
Mayor Norris.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Next, we have a bid award and the approval of a construction contract for that long-awaited John Storm debris deflection boom, the contract in the amount of $209,900 with Advanced American Construction, Inc. And for the staff report, Mr. Archer, Community Services Director.
Thank you, Mayor Norris, and Commissioners, we-- yes, long-awaited bid approval. We've been planning this project for a while, since not too long after we opened the John Storm Park Dock. This-- just for a quick background, we are working closely with the Marine Board on the design and the construction of this project, and its purpose is to deflect, just as it says, to deflect materials if it would be upriver from the John Storm Dock. A lot of debris, logs, and different things that, over time, can be a maintenance burden as well as cause damage to the dock, so this was designed. And it's kind of a first of its-- it's a first-of-its-kind type of a project that the Marine Board has worked on it with us on this, both in planning as well as significant funding. So we-- following the planning and the permitting processes, we bid this once back in the early summer, and we only received one bid, and we felt that it wasn't a very favorable bid, and in fact, it was quite a ways over the engineer's estimate, although from when we did the engineer's estimate, the prices of materials went up significantly, so our bid award tonight is still over our engineer's estimate. We rejected those bids, and in September, we rebid it. This time, we received three bids, which were much more competitive, and the low bid is Advanced American Construction, which, as a side note, is the same construction company that built the dock, that built the John Storm Dock, which we felt very good about. They did an excellent job on that, so we know their track record. And the bidding the second time around, the low bid was about $40,000 less than the one bid that we received the first go-around, so we are saving money by doing that. It is still-- the low bid is still in excess of our original budget, so we had to do a little bit of budget adjusting. We went back to the Marine Board and requested that they take action because they're funding the majority of the project to add additional funds, which they did. And on your commission report, you've got a breakdown there, but essentially, we've added the difference from the original budget. They've increased their budget by about just under $50,000, and then we've increased our SDC contribution by $23,500, which is the same percentage that-- so it's the same-- we're paying the same percentage for our city's share of that. So there is a little bit of a cost adjustment. We do have available SDCs in our current budget, so that's not an issue. I would let you know that we have a short in-water work period, so we're trying to get this bid award approved tonight, and then getting right to work on it. We have between December 1st and January 31st to get this done because of compliance with the in-water work period. So if you're-- with your approval tonight, we'll get right to work on this and hopefully have this built this winter. And with that, we would again ask-- we're asking for your approval of the bid and award of the construction contract in the amount of $209,900 with Advanced American Construction.
Thank you. Commissioner Neely.
It looks like the OSM, the state, you have the existing budget and the increased budget does not add up to the total. Do we just have a wrong digit in there?
Yeah, it doesn't, does it?
The others do.
You're correct, Commissioner. Is the total correct?
Is the statute--
The total is correct.
I will tell you that the total is correct.
I mean, we can go ahead and make the motion. We probably want to correct this at some point.
That's a typo on the existing budget, but the total funding is accurate.
Okay.
So that's the important part, that we've got that part right. So thank you for pointing that out.
Commissioner Mayby.
Yeah, I don't have a real problem with the-- except that I would have liked, I guess, to have seen in this a--
A visual.
Yeah, just a conceptual drawing, you know, of where it is going to be and what it's going to look like. I mean, I know you have a rough idea, but it'll get engineered, but it would have, I think, would have been useful to do that.
Could you actually describe what the visual appearance will be?
And I do have--
Do you have--
I do have drawings. Didn't include those in your packet. I guess we--
I think we saw them at a work session.
I think we did, and that's what we chose not to because, first of all, because of the size and overwhelming you with technical drawings in your packet, but in hindsight, that probably would have been a good idea, so.
Well, I--
Is it?
What I was thinking is, you know, you do the picture, the satellite shot of the river, and you just have a, you know, a drawing of it's going to be here on that, you know, just since we pull those off on a fairly regular basis for the street work and all that, but that's fine. I know where it's going to be upstream, so--
Between--
Well, actually, I want to know--
Between sport craft and?
Yeah, it's north, but I want to know what it visually will look like. You know, when I'm standing on the John Storm Park deck, what do I see? Do I see poles sticking out?
Yes.
Plastic tube?
It's the poles, just like the pilings of the dock?
Pilings, and it'll be basically encased foam that floats, but that's hardened, so it'll be a narrow strip that is sturdy enough to deflect, and it's 160 feet long in four forty-foot segments that are staggered. So it's one contiguous piece, but it's staggered, and again--
And it all sticks out of the water? It all is a boat? It floats?
It does. It'll basically look like a skinny dock.
Oh.
If that's about the best I can--
Oh, okay.
It does stick out of the water, but it's aesthetically, it's designed to kind of match what the dock would look like and what the other water features would look like there. Trade the sea lions to play on there.
And there's evidence that we won't have to have another boom deflector for that? I mean, there is evidence that a boom deflector really does work to deflect debris?
We believe so. I guess it's a-- as I-- well, the Marine Board is in the business of doing these types of marine facilities, obviously. They're the experts. We've really worked closely with them and rely on their expertise and their knowledge. They have engineers that have designed this. As far as we know, as I indicated, I believe that this is the first of its type in a riverway in our region.
It will work. It's not, it's like everything, it's probably not 100% foolproof, but there'll be things we'll still have to deal with, but it will deflect most of the major things we have to deal with. And eventually, you'll have to do some major maintenance on it because it's going to take abuse.
Well, I know, but when we built the dock, we didn't anticipate that we would need that, so.
Well, we kind of did. In fact, I was wondering, we moved the dock, because we knew the stuff coming down rivers was going to be an issue. We felt this was a place where it wouldn't be as exposed as what the original site was, so that's why we moved the dock.
Okay, that's my only questions. Commissioner Neely?
Had he not mentioned the encased foam, I wouldn't have said anything, but this, these foams, I'll tell you, they can be, they can break off, and in the, in the soft cleanups of the coast, huge, huge pieces of them come up in the cleanups at all the time. So I don't know, I don't know if we ever use any kind of material that doesn't do that, but when they get hit, sometimes it do break off the docks and so forth. They're not 100% foolproof. They'll, they'll help. It'll take the brunt of the impact anyhow, so that'll, that'll help.
We believe that it'll, it'll do a significant job of deflecting the majority of the debris. There's still going to be some maintenance, and there's still, you know, some possibility of some, even some damage to the debris boom, but I'd rather have the debris boom damaged than, than our docks.
Okay, may I have a motion, or are there further questions? Commissioner West?
I would like to move approval of the bid award and approval of the construction contract in the amount of $209,900 with Advanced American Construction for construction of the now less mysterious John Storm debris deflection boom.
Moved by Commissioner Mayby, uh, West, seconded by Commissioner Tidwell.
I was wondering if you're seconding the fact you would like to make the motion, or whether you're going to second that you did make the motion?
Pardon?
Yes, just say yes.
I, yes.
I think it's legally done through Robert's rules. Is there further comment, anyone? Nancy, the vote please.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Tidwell?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
The next order of business is to consider approving a memorandum of understanding. We come in and call an MOU with the Main Street Board. Mr. Patterson?
Madam Mayor, members of the Commission, everyone is aware that our Main Street program is very much in its infancy at the present time, and they have approached the Commission and discussed with you kind of their expectations of the city, and particularly their request for funding. This document is a non-binding document, but I think it spells out the expectations that we have talked about, all the way from the Main Street manager to reporting, to assistance from the urban renewal, or at least that inner relationship between the urban renewal and the City Commission. It also outlines the funding commitment that we're making to the Main Street Board. We will follow this eventually with a binding document, but I think this will help them get underway. It's definitely a walk before they can run, and you can kind of see the future. Some of the things we would hope that as they get stronger and our program grows, that they can pick more and more of that up. But it's definitely important to the city that this is a successful program, and so I think this kind of spells out both the expectations of the Board and the Main Street program, as well as our expectations from the city.
Since we have discussed it at several work sessions, two I believe, I discovered something that I don't know belongs in here, but it would be an important thing for me to know that the Main Street Board was considering, and that is advocacy. To be advocates both for the tenants on Main Street, for communication on Main Street, and advocates for the city's programs as well as part of the communication. And we didn't talk about advocacy anywhere. We talked about understanding and comprehensive plans, but...
We could add that.
I kind of think we should. The other, the other thing on the list on page two, where we talk about the list of things that the services and amenities were appropriate, the other piece that's been missing for a long time downtown is communication. I know the Downtown Businesses Coalition has done a little bit of that in all of its forms, but I would hope that Main Street would pick up that, that communication with, within the businesses of the district.
The tenants of the Main Street?
It doesn't say so.
Well, by nature of what the Main Street program is, that's one, one of their top things is advocacy and communication with businesses. But I have a couple of things to add, too, when you're finished.
Okay, just, those just weren't mentioned in this, and if it's going to be comprehensive, you know, maybe it should. But, anyway, Commissioner West?
Well, I was looking through it under Section Four, under, I guess, E, when, I was glad that we put this in here on, the City Commission will regard grant requests for money through, funding through Metro Enhancement or the OCCIT to the Main Street Board, because we addressed that today at a Main Street training session, that, you know, how is that going to be handled, you know, with the Oregon Downtown Coalition? So I'm glad that that was included in here. And then the only other thing I thought maybe that should have been added is under five, and what we, under our Urban Renewal Commission expectations, and I thought that we have been talking about, that we were going to be looking for design language, design code historic from this group. So, under, you have, we seek their, we seek the Main Street's advice for urban renewal projects and for financing physical improvements and economic revitalization, but I thought we were, you know, design was the other component. Just a thought.
Do you want me to make those changes and bring this back to you?
Yeah.
Well, that's not a for the grant, though. That's just period.
But to, I had a question about that one, also, the priority grants, is how do we communicate that? We can say it, and we might believe it, but we are not, we don't have control necessarily over that without some more other direct action. I mean, does it get, do these applications get more points? Do we do them first? I think that's a fuzzy mechanism.
It's very fuzzy, and we brought it up today again at this, our Main Street meeting, of how we were going to, and how other communities have done that. Actually, we brought it up in the context of the whole state, because as of December 1st, there's not going to be any more ODDA in the state of Oregon.
And that stands for?
The Oregon Downtown Development Association. So in general, the state has dropped funding for that program, and the program they're funding for is what? Main Street.
They started and dropped it.
Well, so, yeah, but it's on the, it will shortly be on the Main Street agenda to have a more formal conversation probably with, with the Oregon Downtown Coalition.
If you would like, as well, I have some thoughts of how you might look at that priority. I think the mechanism, but maybe that's a work session topic that we want to chat about December.
Yeah, but we are, I think that's just missing, but it doesn't probably need to be in this.
And let me also add that we have inclusively, you know, want to bring these people, the same group, into our group here and incorporate them. We were saying that maybe they will be the promotion, Main Street program has four approach, or four principles, and one of them is promotion. So we thought maybe the Oregon Downtown Coalition would be our promotion committee, or they certainly could be integrated in it. So, that object is inclusive, inclusivity.
We'll clean this up and put it on your December work session, and then follow up at a, probably mid-meeting in December.
Thank you. Are there, is there any input at this time?
Just, I'd say it's 99% there.
Yeah.
Couple of tune-ups.
Right.
How come I have so much ink on this, then?
Ah, I know. Small tune-ups sometimes take a lot of ink. Okay, next, we move into another piece of business, and that is the purchase of a new piece of our fleet, a combination sewer cleaner vacuum unit. Nancy, pressure. Ooh, trucks.
Good evening, Mayor Norris and Commissioners. We're, the Public Works Department is requesting we approve the purchase of a new combination Vector excavation truck. Just to quote some numbers, we have 130 miles of gravity sewer lines, 19 pump stations, over 100 miles of stormwater collection pipes, 3,600 catch basins, numerous detention tanks. All of these require regular cleaning and maintenance to make sure that they don't clog in terms of flooding, and we do not have bypasses. Both of these situations, if avoided, reduce the city's liability. And so, we have an old Vector truck that is a 1984 Vector combination unit. It's been declared usable only for extreme emergencies, and it's not cost-effective to repair. The other thing that we've found is that our water department, in operating our water valves and exercising our water valves, we have 5,200 water valves approximately in the city. It's very helpful for them to use the vacuum part of this combination vehicle as well to, basically, there's usually a lot of water debris that collects in these valves, and so they would use it as well. So we'll be able to get use out of this piece of fleet, both in the water division, the stormwater division, and the wastewater division. The, we looked at various different units, and Eric Hand, our wastewater and stormwater supervisor, is here to, if you have questions about the process we went through for selecting this unit. We looked at three different units. We chose this one because of it had many features that were preferable for the department. We were also able, able to piggyback on a Rogue Valley Sewer Service District bid, which occurred back in November 26, 2007, and we feel like we're probably getting a good price break for that. So I would welcome Eric to come up and answer your questions, or certainly provide a little more detailed information on the selection process. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Nancy made the effort to be here. I think that we should hear about that. Other questions that you have for Eric? Paul, he's getting ready. Commissioner Mayby?
Yeah, you called it a combination vacuum and excavation unit?
Uh huh.
How does it excavate? Because it doesn't look like it on, on the, the picture looks like a standard Vector truck, so I would expect Vector and TV, but not a, so.
Yeah, pretty much. This is the sound effect of portion of commission.
All together now. One, two, three. There you go.
This commission officially sucks.
That's all, Damon, that was good.
I like it, Damon. We're going to miss you.
As I always say, the public works stuff is most interesting.
Okay, now that we've had our fun, we'll get serious now about this new piece of equipment.
Commissioner Mayby, to address your question, it's fairly recent technology that, in addition to the vacuum and sewer cleaning features on these trucks, they add a high-pressure water gun, approximately 3,000 PSI, and we can use that to actually cut away the soil and vacuum it up around existing utilities. So instead of digging with a backhoe and a shovel, we could actually wash away the soil and vacuum it up, avoiding damage to our utilities as well as others.
So we're going back guilt trip, maybe?
In a sense. A lot more environmentally friendly than...
Well, and I can see that, because with this, you're making potentially a three or four-inch-wide access into a valve, instead of having to do an entire bucket-wide, what are that, 30 inches or something?
Depends on the size of the bucket.
And potentially taking out all that extra asphalt. You can work close to a sidewalk and maybe avoid that damage, so. I just was curious how it excavated, so.
Exactly. That's exactly what it means.
Commissioner Tidwell?
Hey, what is the, what is the life expectancy of this truck?
Approximately 15 years. There is the recommended vehicle replacement schedule at this time.
Now, are we going to keep, Nancy, are we going to keep the old truck in case something happens to this one, so that we can use the old one in emergencies, since it's only used for emergencies?
We actually also have another Vector truck that we will keep in service, and we'll have this new one. And then, Eric, what do we plan to do with the antiquated one?
The antique?
We have a 1984 that'll be sent to state auction and auctioned off. We own a 2002 back on, a smaller version of this, and that will remain in service for the remaining life expectancy.
Only used for extreme emergencies.
Now, the 2002 is used daily.
But after we purchase the new one?
Yeah.
It will still be used.
It's the 1984.
We have the re, to...
We need to for the size of our...
It's a smaller unit, so it fits in traffic and in the medians and all that.
Further questions from the Commission?
Yeah, it's actually not to do with the equipment. I'm just kind of curious, the waste material picking up, both from the stormwater system and from the wastewater system, where does it go to? How's it treated?
We do that separately if we don't mix loads, because once you contaminate the load with sewer, sanitary sewer, then it all has to go to the water environments, sewer plant, and be disposed of at a much higher rate cost. The storm debris is actually de-watered. We developed a de-watering site down by the Cove, and it's just...
Which is temporary.
She adds quickly.
And it's de-watered and then used as landfill. Typically, we take it to can be sandy ground.
So it's got to be thoroughly flushed, I take it, the equipment?
Yes, yes. It's got to be flushed between loads. With these two trucks, we'll probably be able to have one truck dedicated to sanitary sewer and one truck dedicated to storm sewer.
Further questions? If not, may I have a motion, please?
I'm...
Commissioner West?
I move approval of a fleet purchase for the combination sewer cleaner vacuum unit.
For the amount of?
The amount of $343,406.34.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Neely. On the motions, are there further comment or questions?
Where does that 34% come from?
Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Tidwell?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Eric.
The 34% will not become an issue until they get rid of all the pennies.
They're not doing one, though.
I think they can write a check. Okay, next, we have the minutes of October 7th joint work session with the Main Street Board. May I have a motion for adoption? Only Commissioner Neely and I were present, so this is a very small vote here. I'm counting on you to make a motion.
I'll, I'll, I'll move that we adopt the minutes.
I'll second. Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Mayby?
Abstain.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Abstain.
And Commissioner Tidwell?
No.
Abstain.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. I have, motion doesn't pass.
It does. The majority of the people present.
Well, no, that's not how our rules state. Mr. Sullivan, how's that go?
It's really the, the joint board that we have to approve it. You've given your votes and let it go.
It's okay. All right. Motion passes, then, two, zero, with three abstentions. Okay. And the last piece of our business agenda is a liquor license application through OLCC for a new outlet and the full on-premises sales license for a new commercial establishment, Little Coops, doing business as Little Cooperstown Bar and Grill up on Molalla Avenue. To present this, I believe that might be Lieutenant Conrad?
That was my consent agenda.
The staff is recommending the commission approve Oregon Liquor Control License Application for Little Coops, doing business as Little Cooperstown Bar and Grill, which is located at 19352 Molalla Avenue, for a new liquor license for full-on sale premises sales. The Oregon City Police Department ran a background check on Kenneth and Lori Arigati, the corporate officers, and found they're eligible to hold a liquor license.
So no additional information than what is written?
And that's it?
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Yeah, I move to approve the Oregon Liquor Control License Application for Little Coops and corporate.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Mayby. See, no further comment? The vote, please, Nancy.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Tidwell?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. That concludes our business agenda. We will move now into communications, starting with the city manager.
Madam Mayor, I have nothing to report.
Okay, Commissioners, your reports from your meeting? Commissioner West?
A little something, yes. Three different things. I don't know if, this is for everybody at home, and a few in the, or in the room here, too, but we are, presently are going to be redoing the old West Lynn Oregon City Bridge, the historic bridge, and they are, we are looking for pictures of the lights that used to hang on, hang on. Actually, we're not looking for pictures. We're hoping that one of you have one in your garage that you got at a garage sale and thought it was cool, but they would like to redo the whole template on the bridge from the original. So we're giving it a time and advertising around, hoping somebody can find one, because it'd really be neat when we go to preserve it. So, just sharing that. This probably is on the website. Yeah, click on, so if you, you know, this isn't much of a picture. The other thing I would like to tell you about, a little bit about, is the progress of our Oregon 150 group, which is being formed to celebrate the state's 150th birthday next year.
Is formed already.
Pardon?
Is formed already.
It's formed already. And we have lots of events and activities going on. We have everything for history lovers, artists, or if you're interested in hands-on physical work, we have a couple projects planned to, where you can become involved with that. So, the place to find out information on the 150 is at the website, so www.150, no, is it OC150?
OC150.
OC150.com. So just want to keep you, you can go there and update and see the highlight of all our activities.
Is it .com or .org?
.com.
Okay, it's important.
Yes.
May I add, may I add something to that?
Yes.
I think one of the most exciting things that's happened is that we will have a special, there's a special Cesspool Centennial stamp, as you probably know, that was issued by the state in August, and the, there will be a special postmark for Oregon City like there was for the Oregon Trail Celebration. Everyone else's postmark in the state will say Cesspool Centennial Station, but ours will say First City Station, and we'll have a place on January 14th where citizens can come, stamp buffs, collectors can come, and you can have that first day stamp for that issue here in Oregon City that will be unique. So, I think that's pretty special. And the other special thing about it is that... And the other special thing about it is that the art class in high school, under teacher Rocky Smith, will be doing a piece of art for the end of the envelope. And so this combination will make us, again, the first city to do that and make us unique, and you can all look forward to January fourteenth when this issue will be here. We'll give you more details, as Daphne said, look on the website, and we'll let you know that location, but likely will be in a historic location for that day. Please continue.
And I had one last little piece of information here, and I don't know if you at home are as interested in this as much as my fellow commissioners, but I wanted to say, I was at a training session for the Main Street Program the other day, and the gentleman that was speaking was the Deputy Director of the State Historic Preservation Office, Roger Roper, and I don't know if you all knew, but they're, they're moving the Main Street program, cram out of the Economic Development Department, and they're moving it into the historic preservation. So I don't know what that means for our funding, but a lot of historic preservation isn't funded too well, so that was kind of sad. And I also thought, I wanted to share with it, he said something I thought was so interesting because being a whole, an older homeowner and involved in historic things or preservation efforts throughout the community for the last twenty years, that this gentleman was talking, he said, "Let's start thinking about historic preservation in terms of restoration," or not restoration, but rehabilitation, which for the historic preservation people I was like. So the he thinks, or the message they want to convey is reuse, and it's, so it's not an all-or-one, you don't have to have it perfectly historically, you know, to a museum piece. The idea is to restore as much as possible and make it a usable building again. So I just had not heard that attitude on a, expressed on a statewide level, and I thought it was interesting.
It is. Thank you for the report. Others who, reporting back from places where you represent us? Commissioner Neely.
There've been meetings, both of the C-4, that's the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, and also the Policy Advisory Committee, the County Commission on Urban and Rural Reserves. C-4 had a nice presentation from Metro, and I would like to either have them or perhaps the American gift the material, but they actually presented a map and discussion of the potential future routes for mass transit like streetcars and various kinds of non, I'll say, non-bus mass transit systems throughout the whole metro area. I had never seen one before, and it indicates there's some real forward thinking going on in terms of what the overall future would be. And I think it would be nice to actually share that at one point with the commission, either have Metro come out here and indicate where these things are. Oregon City fits prominently in that, we've got two possible routings coming into us, but, well, more than that, actually, yeah, because I think one extending west.
Yeah, along two oh five.
Yeah, two oh five, so there are three. That's right. And so it'd be, it'd be nice for, to have that presented. I don't know if we have to have somebody from Metro present it, or perhaps either staff or somebody to actually put those maps up. I think it's reasonably very important to take a look at what the thinking is.
Yes, and that's actually a perfect segue into the transportation joint meeting between J-PAC, the Joint Policy Advisory Committee.
That's okay, I'll come back to my others, so if you want to continue on that, then I'll come back to the urban reserve.
Okay, to continue with the transportation strand.
Yeah.
And M-PAC, the Metropolitan Advisory Committee, as you know, they're meeting with joint meetings now. We had one on land use, and this one was on transportation last Wednesday, and we actually considered four scenarios, so we had probably five maps, because we had that map, of what exists today, and then we looked at maps of what, of various scenarios. One that was high-capacity transit throughout in multiple routes, and then there was one, I can't remember what it was called.
Connectivity.
The connectivity one, which had three new bridges across the Clackamas River and one across the Willamette in our, in our area, and multiple connectors, and that's the one we've talked about here as being the most successful, I guess, by many planners, is that to provide a great deal of grid connectivity. So where there is no connectivity now, do grids, but not on the freeway level, on more local level. And then there was one with a mass increase of freeways, what was that called?
That was called a throughways.
The throughways, which was going from four lanes to eight lanes.
Yes, and six lanes.
And I forgot what the third, fourth...
That was management, where they controlled the access off the interchange.
So we use things, tools like tolling and other things. So we did our voting on that, and it was, of course, really astounding that when we took away both politics and funding, we all loved high-capacity transit, light rail to everywhere. When we put added politics and financing to it, that fell a little lower, and the, actually the connectivity was second.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
The connectivity, where it actually provided alternates, and the thinking is that, you know, if you, if you just build freeways, everybody has to get to the freeway, but if you provide alternates, then people can go around the clog spots, so. But December tenth will be the opportunity for anyone to look at the hybrid. We'll take the information from the land use portion, the information from the transportation portion, they're going to create a hybrid for us to look at, and then that will become the model that we'll consider next year through M-PAC and J-PAC as what do we want to be when we develop in our new transportation and land use scenario? Commissioner Mayby.
How many of those choices presented the river as a commuter alternative to downtown Portland?
None of them yet?
Oh, my, what is...
Well, actually, it's on some of the lists.
We've got a twenty-seven-lane highway, and we refuse to use it.
That's, it's in some of the alternatives that we talk about.
That's because fishermen, fishermen block it.
Yeah.
All you need is one log boom to go by and scare the hog off.
Got that dawnstorm log boom.
No, talking about the old rafts.
Yeah, I know. I talk about the debris...
You don't got a hog line like that.
The debris boom. So to circle back to where you want to continue, I think, I think there's multiple ways that we can do that. We can talk about transportation by itself, or we can talk about it when we talk to our community about growth scenarios and look at what we maybe think as priorities here with what is and what may be, or other combinations. We can certainly get those maps. You probably have them.
That's right, we do. And what Commissioner Neely is probably talking about is some maps that have, are presenting lots and lots of high-capacity transit ideas that have been forwarded by past Tri-Met planning and metro planning, as well as a number of public hearing or open houses that they helped out, the region, one of which was in Oregon City. And what we're also doing is establishing priority criteria so that we can prioritize those numerous high-capacity transit routes, and we'll see how that all comes together. We, Dan and I are both sitting on the High Capacity Transit Committee, and there will, I'm sure, be additional open houses to be sharing a lot of this information. So we can keep you posted on that. We're happy to bring in maps any time, or we can contact Tri-Met or Metro, which, whatever you prefer.
I think we, let's talk about it in work session, how we want to put together both those transportation issues and the land use issues.
Biggies.
They're big.
Mm-hmm.
They impact our work. So please continue.
Well, the, the urban renewal, excuse me, not urban renewal, the urban and rural reserves PAC, we're actually sitting in groups at segments of, with maps of segments of the county and trying to agree with each other what our, our initial priority is to identify rural reserves to be protected. It's interesting, I've chosen, and I probably will continue to sit on the one that, the maps, there are two maps that split Oregon City, one going towards Willamette and Canby, and the other one extending from Oregon City south and, south down into the Beaver Creek and east to Estacada. I chose to sit on the latter one because I think this is the big issue, big issue area with the Beaver Creek community and so forth. It's interesting to sit on that committee because, of course, we have representatives from the Beaver Creek community that are there. Also, our map contains Damascus, it turns out to contain the Damascus area, so we're getting input from a, from a counselor there in Damascus that's, that's involved in all the challenges associated with developing a new city and not having any funding for it and so forth, but the various points of view in terms of what might happen. But it is, and I mentioned this the last time, I think it is really critical that very early on, perhaps in the next commission period, that we need to have a focused discussion of ourselves on how we want to see Oregon City grow. That may not have any specific direction in terms of what might be designated as rural or urban reserves, but it might be, have some implications as to where jurisdictional responsibilities might lay, and I think it'd be very good to have that discussion early on, before actually decisions are made in terms of where the rural reserves are.
And then another nice segue, Doug sits on the local committee, Clackamas County Committee, and I sit on the regional committee, so the topics of discussion that we had of actually, the big challenge there was, why in the Clackamas County Committee aren't, are some of the affected cities excluded? So that's, and not sitting on your committee is the city of Milwaukee and the city of Lake Oswego, both who have, mostly Lake Oswego, who have the Stafford Basin at their edge, but they're not included. I don't think West Lynn is either, actually.
West, West Lynn is there.
They are on there.
Yes.
Okay. I believe maybe those two are the only two. So that was a, that was a challenge. And then the other challenge that we had is, we've talked about farmland, but it just appeared that we're talking about preserving forest land quite as much, which is probably a little more controversial area of what, what, how you designate forest land. So we're, we're looking at multiple maps also of where the productive farmland is, where the productive, the trees that we have now are, but they're not all designated as forest. So this is going to be a process of refining, where the counties will be looking at areas that are urban or reserved, but there's also a third category, the undesignated. That doesn't mean that anything's changed, it means that the zoning that is there now continues to exist. So if nobody can agree, it stays as it is. So hopefully we'll have the agreement, yeah, we have to say that over and over again because everybody thinks that they're going to either be placed into a reserve of some kind, but they're not. It has to be agreement by all parties that that happens. So, or you become status quo, essentially. So that's that one. And then the other, I guess, I think those are my reports, actually. Anyone else have any other?
I was just going to say, the easy way to designate forest lands is simple, lumber.
You may get some pushback on that. Okay, the, we all attend many meetings, and I thank you for the time that you give to do that. If there's no further business to come before us, we are adjourned.